Then roofs, they got to close the door. They didn't close it possibly. For roofs, you should go back. You should go back. Only van had deep roots. They needed to be trussed. And the roof falls. The tree. So. It's not something that we're involved in. But it was quick. But there was many areas.
Did I just tell you?
I don't know.
Mr. Weir, do you remember that? After two weeks of... I just moved your wife and she didn't come to my meeting.
That's all right.
Did I come?
Thank you.
So let him go. Thank God for that. I've been quiet.
He used to be a Sonny Clark. That's another one. He was above that. He was always with him. In the barbershop, there was a dollar general is. This desk, he was there. Yeah, Andrew was poking that hole up right inside. But he retired, my mother got that job. They don't mean that. Sometimes I talk a while. You don't care nothing about it. It means a lot to others, you know, we were... We lived it, you know.
You're too nice.
Yes.
I was supposed to get older than anybody but her. I was like, we sat there. I said, I don't want to see him. They're on fire. And you couldn't see around it. I moved here yesterday, the old Pope dogs. That was it. Third Pope dog in my lifetime. The first one was across the street over there. And then later on, I'm going to tell you in that story about we were... I'd ride around the house.
And it's so hot. Have you noticed how it takes?
Tell me, I haven't seen my lady grow that. I'm still not impressed. Oh, they just passed it through. So do you. Seventy-eight, you got me by four. Seventy-nine, seventy. Seventy-five. Your brother's face now.
She has changed.
Actually, I'm... All right? How are you today?
How are you, sir? Ready to get this thing behind us.
I've had some deep spells today, but other than that, I'm good. I feel everyone's shot. I'm feeling stronger and stronger and stronger. Or either this buildup in my system. I've had... I've had more.
How's your trees doing, Andy?
What's going on?
Orange flashes.
Kind of cold in December.
I should... She's done pretty well.
What kind of year are my trees?
Yeah, I haven't got yours many. Sat soon as this year as I had last. But I got a lot of them.
Go wins. About like... Wedding person.
Huh?
I don't know what we're going to do. Don't think so.
Oh, yeah, you can.
You can.
I'll give you Trump to go find a morning, bro.
Do what?
All right, I think we're ready to get started. We're on staff, Pastor Bobby Hall. We're going to just take that disturbance away this summer.
Can I do it right here? You want me to do it right here? I love it. Father in heaven, we come to you on this beautiful day. We just thank you so much for your blessings and father for loving us and taking care of us and watching over. We also asked at this time, at this night, that we can love each other. And father, and let everything be done and, and father, in order and deep sea and to please you. And I pray that we can leave this house, be friends, and we can love each other. But we pray that every decision that is made of being your will and your wisdom and ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. United States of America. And to the Republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to work with you once our meeting this Monday, noon to stake at 20:25 at 6:00 PM. We have a conference line set up. Number there is 1-917-900-1022. Access code is 32347PAM. This is not a toll free number. You may be subject to long distance charging according to your long distance plan. When a chairperson opens the meeting for public comment, please follow the below instructions. If you wish to speak, please dial star five. A moderator will unmute your line and return to speak and notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address. You'll be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an agenda item will be given three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each added item. With that said, we will move on to item three for the panel of approval of the agenda. Motion by Commissioner Figel to approve. We have a second. Second, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have a favor. We're going to our consent items. If anyone had a chance to look at your consent items, any discussion, any questions? I think the county manager had one item. Again, she wanted to discuss with the board.
Item number 10, I did want to pull this off from consent to discuss with the board. And we can do it right before the public request for Mr. Andy Jackson can speak or not. That's up to you.
Everyone okay to pull 10 out of consent and move into, I guess, for more public... Right before item 11, we're just doing next. Okay with that? Okay. All right, we'll just move on into the public request, item 10, the board to consider...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items, one to none.
Got it. I got a motion by Commissioner Figel to approve all consent out of the 10. A second. Second, on a favor. All right, we'll move to public request, item 10, the board to consider approval of draft lease agreement with the Perry Garden Club. Agenda by Lawanda Pemberton, county manager.
So there are two versions of a lease in your packet. One was one that our attorney prepared and then Mr. Jackson submitted as an edited signed lease that was approved by the Perry Garden Club. And I just need some guidance from the board. I did want to bring to the board's attention that sections three and five of the revised lease, the one marked B, do contain language that provides the county will be responsible for the removal of any trees that could fall on the Perry Garden Club buildings? Since they have no insurance for wind damage, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that lease B also contains language that provides for assistance with mowing and minor cleanup of property upon request from the Perry Garden Club. Which I think historically we provided.
Correct.
And we have in the past removed damaged or dangerous trees.
Correct.
Okay. So the options are for the board to approve lease A or B. And I think lease A had some language that maybe wasn't quite consistent with what the Perry Garden Club needed. Or we can, we can go back to the drawing table and try to find a combination of the two leases that meets everyone's approval.
May I make a few comments?
Absolutely.
The lease that we prepared from the Perry Garden Club is a little more explicit about who's where ownership is, who owns the building, who owns the land. And there were some items in the county lease, like for us to check the new maintenance on the building. Well, we've been maintaining the building since 1970. And we've been taking care of that. And also, the county lease didn't expressly talk to us about what we did with the rent income. And what they did say that we couldn't sublease. But all we wanted to do is rent up for a week because, though, quite frankly, the festivals in town use that garden club as well for an extended period of time. So it was just the revised lease that you see that we've submitted basically gave us those things explicitly written out in the lease. It wasn't done with the county version. So we, I had a lot of pushback from garden club members on the first, the county lease. Everybody was in agreement with the garden club version that we submitted to that county.
And, and I, I can, you know, we're not disagreeing with that. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that there are maintenance obligations.
You like telling me that you called me on the phone and told me to do a lease real quick?
No, I understand. I wasn't, I'm not trying to... For some reason, you know, we didn't get a lease in March when it was originally submitted to Mr. Bishop. And we were getting up on storm season. So he did, he turned it around very quick and we were appreciative in doing that.
Isn't there a provision in there for it to renew for, it's for 20 years and then to renew for another 20 years in yearly?
It is.
I want my wife to understand that. We talked about 40-year lease then.
Well, or until the building falls down, whoever comes first. The building is, is in good shape.
I have no problem with, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that there was a turnover in about a day and a half.
Yeah. Oh, I was, I was most appreciative that we had something to start with. Thank you.
I've got a question for Camara. With the liability with the trees, is that normally what we do is take liability if the tree falls?
There's a statute, okay. Your, say, your neighbor next to you has a tree and the tree falls, and it's your tree on your property, but the tree falls on, on his property? Guess he pays for it?
The tree.
The tree owner. Tree owner. There's a statute specifically on that. Answer your question. Here's what it is.
Any other questions?
I got a question too. Tell me about removing trees. It's dangerous. One that's got beetles in it that's going to die and fall and one that's broke from the hurricane. Is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about cutting everything that could reach the building?
I think, well, I don't want to...
Well, this is, we're actually just referring to the lease agreement right now. Out of 10, just referring to the language in the, in the lease agreement. I think what you're talking about may be the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
One more question. Is this budgeted to the one that's...
No, ma'am.
And so what is the potential cost?
I think for, the last time I checked, it's about $750 a tree. And, and I believe there's 15. Is it more than 15?
Well, there's, there's three of them that are, two of them are dead and they're, they're away from the building, but they're... Bugs got them. They were, and another one's just, needs just to be taken down. So it's, but you're right, there's about a dozen of them that would cost that amount.
They're dead?
Well, three are, two are dead, one needs to go. And then the other dozen are fall hazards to the building itself.
They may, these were hurricane.
Let's not, let's not gamble with the next one because, and quite frankly, Jim, if that tree falls on that building, it's done.
I understand that. I got five out of my attic in my home, I know.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah. But the thing is, we lost a bunch of trees in the hurricane in Forest Capital Park. Don't really look good without pine tree. And they didn't, years, they're long-lived pines, they're like 100 years old.
I understand. I've just had a dozen of them cut from around, around my house, the plantation. But for that reason, I, I just, if one falls in my house, you know.
But to spread that cost of each tree, cut all them trees, is I compare it to all the taxpayers of Taylor County because they got trees in their yard that could fall on their house too. You know? I just, I'm just, my constituents act as I am.
What other? I was going to deal with the lease agreement part of it first. We'll get that going there.
So if you look at item five, it says, "Leasee further acknowledges that the leaseor is responsible for removing any such trees that present a risk as outlined in the damage section of this lease." So I guess I just want to clarify if, if, I mean, if we have someone check the trees and they don't present a risk, is, are those only trees that need to be removed? Does that include stump grinding? Just for budgeting purposes? I think we need to know what responsibilities we have.
Well, as per, the ones we're concerned about, the ones that fall on the building. And we, we went through quite a bit of survey this year and looking at which ones, people agreed that needed to come down. We identified some, we extended the number. It got reduced back to just the ones that we felt were of hazard. And as my wife put it when we had ours cut down and I asked her about stump ground, and she said, stumps don't fall on your house during a hurricane. So I, while we lock the stumps out, we don't need to do that. I mean, that's just part of the deal. Stumps are fine if we can just get the trees down.
Mr. Chair, so for good business purposes, I would like for somebody from the county or somebody that's in county of points to go look at these trees and give us their opinion on it. And then we need to know specifically how many trees need to come out. And we can come back at the next meeting and we can discuss that, exactly how many trees we're talking about.
Well, I think we've done, Mr. Figel, I think we've identified the damaged trees. I think the, what, and Andy, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the concern that the Perry Garden Club has is not necessarily the, we, I think we're all in agreement on the unhealthy trees. It's the trees that are, that look healthy that their concern may fall on the building. Is that accurate? Okay. So it's, it's all about the ones that could potentially fall on the building during the next storm.
And we've looked at that and we've made a determination that that's, that that's a high probability that that will happen?
No, no, ma'am.
And that's why, you know, just because we're so in such a mess with the budget. And, and I want to do everything that's necessary, okay? So I don't want anybody to get me wrong. But I want to make sure that we're, that we're doing just what needs to be done. And I want to know exactly how many trees that's going to be and exactly the cost to the county. And which we...
You've done estimates on each of them.
That's the three trees, correct?
Well, those, yeah, those, heck, I could send my guy out with a chainsaw tomorrow and take the ones out that are dead. And there would be a problem, except that it's on county land and I need permission to do it. The, the problem we have is, is that there are a dozen trees that look like they could come down. In fact, one of them is on the county property over at the camping area they use across the fence. We have no permission to cut them down. We, we've had offers to be able to cut them down for no cost to us or to the county. But they're county trees. We just, we, we got to get it, we'd like to get them down. Because quite frankly, if one of them falls on that building, that's the end of the building. The garden club has dropped in over $40,000 in that building and that site over the last, just the last few years to bring it up and maintain it and have a viable rental and income stream for the club and service to the community. As to, as Kay and I were just talking about, we're one of the least costly club rental places in town. Us and the women's club. So it's, we've got, we've been doing this for the 19, since the 1970s and it's been a viable thing. We'd just like to see that continue for at least the next 20 years.
Okay, so to be clear, Jim, are you asking permission for y'all to cut the trees down that you're split? Is that what you're saying?
That's how we kind of started with all this back in November. But when we met with Lawanda in January, she said two things. One, she wants a lease because the, a Taylor County Development Authority lease we found from the 1970s that we renewed, we were told that wasn't valid anymore. And secondly, since there were county trees and potentially county property and they had some value, then she needed to go through and get three estimates. And plus, we had the forester go out and do a determination on the rest of the trees. I mean, quite frankly, you know, we, we've studied this a lot. We're kind of in an impasse. We, we can't cut the trees. We can't do a fundraiser to cut the trees. We'd like to get the county to cut the trees because it's, they're, they're trees. But we don't feel safe with them being up there for the next storm season. Because we got, our, we were grateful with, after our day, that we were able to get the repairs done on the trees that fell. We repaired them. But we were informed that our wind insurance had just been terminated after that. We could, you know, we just can't get insurance on that old building. So it's a community asset. We just need some, some help here getting this done. That's all.
So, Mr. Chairperson, the discussion about cutting the trees and selling them, the, just to clarify, there was someone, I think, who had offered to cut the trees and, and sell the timber and maybe give the proceeds, I guess, to the garden club or I think was...
Use it to offset costs to the...
Right. But typically, when we have, when we have opportunities like that, we do off, you know, we do offer it to different companies to go in and, and cut trees. So and then the, whatever, the funds that were raised would normally be given back to the county. So I couldn't approve for that to happen and the funds to go back to the garden club. Now, if you, I mean, we can seek a way to have a, maybe a timber company go in and cut the trees and, and take them to market. But anytime we've done that in the past, we've had to have, you know, we, we've offered it to anyone in the public or any, any company who'd like to submit a price to that, for that.
I want to kind of back up. We're trying to do an item 10, I think, which is actually right to the case.
Right.
So I want to deal with the lease and then I think our next item talks about cutting trees. So why don't we look at the lease and, and does, you know, does everyone got any, you know, looking at the lease? Anyone got any questions on the lease? Any, the, the verbiage on the lease? Mr. Bishop, I know you mentioned the 20-year plus option for an additional 20 years to turn them 40.
Yeah, it's in the, the lease fee.
Right, yeah. So are there any other, any other concerns that, outside of that, and not necessarily that being a concern?
The reason they keep going back to the cutting the trees is because the lease has that in that.
Correct.
I see that, but I mean, uh...
Will you ask me?
Is there any outside of that?
The one I did.
Is there any other issue that you see in this lease that would be concerning to the county?
Yeah. If the roof goes bad, will we even have, having the county have to put a roof on it?
Not unless your tree falls on it.
I mean, insurance companies a lot of times reason, the single that been changed in years is the reason they can't pay the insurance.
Right. We just had a new roof put on there recently.
Yeah, that should last 20 years. So I'm...
Well, Mr. Chairperson, if the board approves their, their signed lease, there's really no reason, reason to discuss number 11 because you would have already approved it.
I understand, but I mean, I think after, listen, Mr. Bishop talking about good as possible, you know, statute wise. I mean, it sounds like we're responsible whether it's in the lease or not. That may, that's my... I mean, am I, is that what I heard it or not? So is there any other discussion on the lease part? Does, does we need to table it?
If somebody got hurt in the building, that they were renting it out to somebody and somebody got hurt in there, where would that liability fall?
We have liability insurance for renters and for...
For renter.
And for the, the club. We got everything, the wind insurance.
Yeah, that's the reason I'm asking. Yes, sir. Is there a discussion, I mean, will obtain a motion to approve or, I mean, in the lease part of it?
I'll make a motion for the lease.
A motion by Commissioner Figel to approve the lease through a second. Second, by Commissioner Figel, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Out of 11, I mean, I'm not sure if there are any reasons to discuss.
I don't think so. I'll just need to bring back to the board a request to transfer funds to pay for the tree removal.
Now, now, we don't, I don't think it's necessarily, I don't... This request to remove the trees, we don't have to say we got to move the tree just because somebody says they got to move them. I'm just saying. Is that correct?
Well, it says in the lease agreement, "Includes the timely removal of storm or insect-damaged trees and any trees that present a risk of falling due to wind or storm activity and potentially damaging the garden club's main building or storage buildings." Well, that's the 12 trees we're talking about. So I would need funding to remove. I would need the $11,000 plus dollars to remove all the trees.
Again, I, I would like for somebody to verify that all these many trees have to come out? Or, or what's the number of trees? I don't want to just agree to something that's going to cost the county money, not knowing exactly how many trees we're going to find out and what the cost will be.
I think the verification was that there was three trees that was definitely damaged and needed to come out. And our wish was to get these other trees taken out just because they're close to the building, but they don't really, just because they're close to, I mean, there's trees close to the building, have them all over the place, but that don't mean they're, they're dead and going to fall.
The trees that are in question are marked with take and...
Who marked them?
Well, several people marked them. Personally, I marked them. And then we had those verified, of course, the, that looked at the diseased trees with one of the foresters. And one of the trees of the 12 are over on the other side of the fence on the extension property over there. So, you know, that one's broken in half. So it's, it's, fortunately, it hasn't died yet.
I mean, can you verify that there is three trees that do have damage that do have issues?
Correct.
But the additional trees is where I like Commissioner Figel, and I'm not, I think I agree with that, that have someone go and investigate before we just go spend $10,000, $11,000. I didn't take it that our agreement said that we just had to go do it just because someone...
Well, I, I don't, I don't know how to determine a risk of falling due to wind or storm activity, which is, I mean...
If the tree looks healthy and there's nobody says the trees are even, it should fall, you know?
The method is we are dying.
What number extension agent, is our extension agent qualified to do this?
No, but we have, we can utilize the harbor from the forestry service, which is what we, we've done to verify the trees that are damaged, which at, you know, several months ago was the three trees. But, but the garden club is stating that they feel like there's a potential risk of all the trees.
And I understand that. I, I heard that. And the only thing that I'm saying is I'm, if it's all of them, then that need to come out and have to come out, then that's the way it is. But I want to know that for sure before I agree to spend this amount of money when we're really going to die with our budget.
I understand the budget issue. That's very important. The trees are marked. I would, I would ask that the commissioners do a drive-by of the garden club, look at the trees and, you know, understand our fear that, that one of them, that one of them goes down across that club. The garden club might have been around 100 years, but that building isn't going to be around anymore.
I looked at them.
Yes.
Y'all got everyone that could reach a building, it's a fail, you know?
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
But it's, it's, it's a kind of, I'm, I'm going to Pam on that. It's kind of hard to spend hard-earned taxpayer's money for, you know, for something that, you know, I've had a constituent ask me about it. They just don't want their tax money spent cutting trees that could reach a building, may reach a building, when they got them in their yard that could reach their building and they, they're going to have to cut them and pay for it to get it cut.
Is, may I ask, is it possible that we could have permission to have the trees cut if we could figure out a way to do it? Uh, and work with one of the loggers and see if we can get a reduced price and maybe work together on this?
I'm still at the same place with what we're seeing. Like, I need to know what trees exactly need to come out and how many. And I understand what you're saying, but from my perspective, I need more information.
Lawanda, can I have some of the other stuff to help with the trees?
Let me do that again. I mean, it's been probably six months. That's no problem at all. We'll, we'll have that done again and I'll bring it to the board. And we'll have a better idea at that point, which trees are healthy, which trees are not, which trees could maybe potentially, you know, reach the building and we'll, I'll just, we'll just bring it back to the board.
Well, you know, we don't have big storms until August, late August, September. So maybe we'll be okay.
Well, I tell you what, we can get the damaged trees out pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And, and we can do that.
Thank you. Are we going to add a twelve, water rounds discussed, water round ready?
Sir, I understand that completed here on mountain, so we'll get a look at it before you can make the decision.
Mr. Walter, it's not in their, in their packets. We just, we just got the results today, but our attorney can provide an update on the, on the Lawrenceville Road.
Thank you. What we did was, we had a meeting today, Ralph?
Yes, sir.
Founded, and they founded deeds from L.A. Rowell in Virginia to Taylor County, uh, in nineteen sixty-five. I'm sure you're familiar with that deed. Are you not, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it provided for a strip of land forty feet wide to be used for highway purposes on two strips, really. It's got two legal descriptions there. Also, then the discussion was what, it doesn't say in the deed that they have to use it for highway purposes. It just says, uh, to be used for highway purposes. Okay? And what they found was that there was about a third of what was deeded has been used for a road.
Yes, sir.
Not the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and the question was, and if I'm, if I miss anything, I've got Lawanda there, was there at the meeting too, was that your position was that there was a fence blocking a portion of the road. But what they were telling me was that the fence did not block the portion of the road that the county has been maintaining for this sixty years.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there again, my, my original question was, was is it, or is it not a county road?
And you're right, they are only maintaining, but so are you only maintaining a large portion of all of your county roads? And that list that you used, that he measured the thing, that list of roads that he used to do that, he shows the beach road as twenty foot. He shows, no, sixteen foot. He shows all of these roads, but he only showed the riding surfaces of the roads. But I, my, you know, I don't, I don't really care. There was a thing brought up. It is, in my opinion, a county right-of-way. I don't have any objections that the county declares that it's not a county right-of-way. You know, that, that there's no, no real issue there. But if it is a county right-of-way, to go to the statute that you kept referring to in which you told Mr. Music that there needed to be an advertisement for closing the road. Well, I had already talked to Lawanda before this about, I was willing to pay for closing the road. But it got all blown out of proportion. And the, the issue is, is that part of that road that has not been maintained, I have aerial photograph that shows when it was maintained, and I have legal surveys that show all of that road, every bit of it, all the way over. And the road that, that originally tied into the church property was where it tied into when J.C. Knowles was the road superintendent and who also was the deacon in that church when it all tied together. But there again, I, I didn't pick this fight. I went out there and started cleaning up storm damage and, and in spite of what Mr. Music has posted on Facebook and everywhere else about what I was doing and accusing me of a bunch of stuff and stood in this meeting and called me a liar, and Jamie did not shut him down, but he would not let me respond to it. Now, I don't, I don't have any issues whatsoever with closing that road. And I was even willing to pay for it at one time. Did I not talk to you about it or? And that was before we had all of this, right?
I can't remember when it was, sir.
But anyway, the issue is, the original question was, is it a county right-of-way, maintained or unmaintained, or is it not? And if it is, then we need to do a road closure on it. If it is not, then we don't need to do nothing. But in the meantime, you know, there's a portion of it, of the fence, and Pam, you went out there and looked at it, there's a portion of the fence that blocks one of the north-south legs of the road. The entire fence doesn't, but that portion, the road goes up and squares over it. Don't make that radius. Now, I have a license, I had a licensed surveyor come in and survey the whole thing, and I've got that survey. I've got it, and it includes all of those right-of-ways that were deeded to the county. Now, last time you said, y'all said, well, there's no deed to it. There's no deed to it. Well, now you're saying that, now you're admitting that there's a deed to it. And the whole issue is Kenneth Dudley. That's where your problem is. I'm through. I, I don't care. It doesn't matter to me. Either close it or say that it's not a county road. And if it's not a county road, then I will go ahead and give this to my attorneys in Tallahassee, and they will apply for it. And that portion of that road that you're talking about, that if it's not a county road, then it's deeded to my daddy or to my family. Is that not right?
Was deeded to, uh, uh, deed that I was looking at was the deed from, uh, L.A. Rowell in Virginia to the county.
Okay, so, so if, if the county does not claim that, is not going to accept it, who does it go back to in your legal opinion?
Well, it goes back to the original owner, of course.
Okay. Now, that's what I was trying to tell you all the time, all the time. And you would not hear it. I tried to sit down with you and talk to you. I met with you out there and talked with you. I met with Mr. Hall, not you.
Yeah.
And you said you didn't want to go to court, and I said, I don't either. You said, we'll, you said, we'll, we'll have a meeting, and you said, wait till after Easter. So I waited till after Easter, and the next thing, what?
Just the board, please.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, I've just, I, I, I don't have anything else to do. I'm, I'm through with it. So.
Real quick, we have a real quick...
What the, what was decided was that the, and I'm just telling what people told me, haven't been out there, is that the county has maintained about a third of what's pursuant to this deed, not the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And so it's determination of whether, number one, whether the county wants to, and you can't make that decision today, whether you want to file a petition to close that or leave it open. That's, that's third, because that's the portion that's being maintained by Taylor County.
Two, two other things that I'd like to bring up to your attention. One is you issued a building permit to a lady on that right-of-way. Now, you did that. This county issued a building permit for a house on that right-of-way. But it's wrong. It's what I tried to tell you. If they would accept the fact that that deed goes down that west right-of-way line and she would have her property and it wouldn't bother. But anyway, the, the whole if, I already have a deed, and fortunately, I got it before Ollie died. But I already have a deed from my siblings, deeding all of that road that was designated or intended for a county road to me, subject to what the county maintains. So it is not yours.
Is that mine? Is that a quit claim or a warrant?
It's a quit claim.
If such, okay. Uh, again, uh, if in fact the county would, you can't make that decision tonight, but if you would, uh, someone filed a petition to close, you can file petitions to yourselves as a practical matter. That's up to y'all. Of course, you have a public hearing on that. Usually, you know, you have two sides to every story when you have a public hearing on that.
Mr. Comrade, so a question, if, if that's an option and the other option is for Mr. Rowell to pursue ownership of that portion of, of the right-of-way?
All of the right-of-way. And, you know, you talked about, you pointed out, there was a quit claim deed, but a quit claim deed is just as good as a warranty deed. If you don't have anything else, but quit claim deed is backed up because there's a warranty deed behind it that stands up to it.
And I said that is, I wouldn't have given you a, a warranty. I had of given you a quit.
You'd have given a quit claim, right. And that, that's, that's what I...
I'm wrong with that.
Because the warranty deed from daddy is a warranty deed. But the whole, the whole thing, really, truly, if the county, I mean, you've got roads all over this county and that list that y'all went by when y'all said it was seventeen foot wide, that list, all of those roads on that list have a width on them, and the width is a riding surface.
That's absolutely correct. I don't think it was intended to be any other way.
Well, but you said, but you said it was a prescriptive easement road.
Right.
Which when in reality, you had a deed to it. And from a, from a county standpoint, I always would have preferred that the county had a right-of-way versus a prescriptive easement. Because if you get off of that prescriptive easement, and then the prescriptive easement's not defined. In fact, my deed or my survey that I had done shows that road has protruded over into the church's property on the right-hand side because the superintendent in the county has not insisted that the right-of-ways be adhered to. And you, like I said, if you go down the beach road, you don't have a deed to any of these roads. Or you, you may find them, but they, they are way back. The beach road, the road from the beach all the way down to Steen Hatchie, all of those roads, you know, they, they used the riding surface. They didn't use the actual... But the thing about the, the other roads is they actually have state monuments that state put out on there. But again, my position simply for the Lawrenceville Road, if you say that the county only claims what they maintain with the greater blade, I mean, you do most portions of it, but if you're only claiming what you maintain with the greater blade, that's fine. Because I do have a deed, every bit of it. I hadn't recorded it, don't want to, but I have a deed for every bit of it. It would just create a lot more problems for the church and everybody else. Now, I don't want to do that. I prayed about it. I've done everything I could, and I know that my, uh, I never was a good politician. I never could articulate the way things should be. But at the same time, I have never intended to win. All I wanted to do was to be right. That's all I want, is for it to be right. You put it on your conscience, vote it like you think it to be, it to be right, and whenever it gets through, you'll go one or two places. If I don't agree with it, I'll take it to the attorneys in Tallahassee, real estate attorney, and they've already gotten the information. Uh, the surveyor that did it for Wade, he's already got the information and he's already seen all the mess that it's, the deeds, how they were all screwed up and the descriptions don't even, are not even the same between the, uh, contract for deeds and the actual warranty deeds. They just copied. That ain't the way you do things. But anyway, uh, whatever the candidate decides to do, I don't care. I didn't intend to take this much time with this. All I want to know is your decision. Like I said, the road, all forty foot of it, from the church's property is where it was tied to originally, but I, you know, I closed a part of it, or they was worried about me going through the church yard, I put barricades up there. But it comes right down to it, the county doesn't claim it. I'm going to take them deeds up there and record it. That's what I'm going to do. And everything that the county don't claim is going to be deeded to me, and somebody can take me to court for that, if I want to. I ain't got nothing else to say about it, but...
Go ahead, Mr. Speaker. I'm Jesse Messing. I live eighty-four ninety, Alphamont Road Road. I'm a little confused about what Mr. Rowell's speaking there tonight. I don't understand a word of it. First of all, he says that he didn't pick this fight. He didn't start this trouble. When in fact, that's a stubborn thing, by the way. There was no indication of any problems there until he began clearing the land that he now claims is county property, which from my understanding requires permits to clear. I haven't seen, has, has the county here had any permits from Mr. Rowell for clearing that land?
Well, we don't need to get into all that.
Oh, why not? Why, why is my opinion about what's going on here tonight invalidating?
He has a question, has nothing to do with permits or anything. He's wanting to, just a real simple answer. All this other stuff is not important.
But then all this other stuff should have been announced before, Ms. Figel.
Is all this going on. You don't need any more confirmation.
You know, you know darn well, I have a right to speak in, in reply to this man gentleman said. Now, he said that he didn't start this. He said he talked to Pastor Hall. Now, you know, unless they had a conversation, Pastor Hall can speak for himself here. He's here tonight. To my knowledge, there was nothing said to Pastor Hall prior to this fence from one of them. He has spoken to, to the widow woman across the street, Mr. Early. He talked to her. He's threatened her. Because I don't know, I don't understand all this stuff. Here's what I know. The church went through the process of going to the property appraiser, getting the legal descriptions, all verified, went through the process of hiring a surveyor to survey it. This is after Mr. Rowell decided he wanted to clear it himself. And also after he tried to run down my wife with a bulldozer, said, yeah, there's a little bit of friction there. I don't know any gentleman in this room tonight whose wife...
The chairman of the body.
whose wife, there's one to somebody, whose wife can stand there looking at somebody working. And they run up on him and the bulldozer don't stop until they get eight feet from her with a bucket, bucket straight on to her from thirty feet away. Wouldn't be upset with him. Can I do that to your wife? Can I do that to your wife? I'm sorry, but we didn't start this. We were doing just fine. He started clearing, we went and looked at him clearing. He made a malicious assault with a deadly weapon against my wife. I'm kind enough, I didn't call the police that day, I should have. I'm sure he's got enough money for bond. So there's that. That's a fact. Facts are stubborn things. Those are the facts of the matter. He did not talk to the pastor prior to do all this work. He came over my property, started planting pines on our property. He decided he wanted, he wanted to plant pines on church property to try to claim it his. Now, he says that Taylor County has the property. And I, I understand that there's been something found there that's in this county. So now he wants to take the property back from the county. There's a whole lot going on in this mess and I'm telling you what, right now, I do not appreciate it. I do not appreciate the church being put into the position there and put in by Mr. Rau, nobody else. I don't appreciate him trying to run down my wife, a member of their church, with a bulldozer. I don't appreciate that in one bit. I don't appreciate him trying to get my wife arrested while the fence was being erected. That's, that's probably on Deputy Dash's, I can go get it if you want to. He was sitting there screaming to have her arrested. Lying, yes, lying, I know that's a bad word to use. But it's facts, again, stubborn things. It was not true. She did not never point a gun at him. Deputy was standing right there. And yet, we had guns on us. Because we knew the volatility of this man. We knew he was a very volatile man. He has a history. So, you know, we landed for defending ourselves, but when nobody ever pointed a gun at him, that never happened. And that's a part of public record there too, if that dash cam, if that body cam was running. That's a part of public public record also. So what the county does in this matter is up to the county. I agree with him on that one point. I don't understand where this property he's talking about, where it lands in church property. I know the church went through the process that I think is due diligence to establish what's theirs and what's not. And we erected a fence on them. And where that goes from here, I don't know. But I am not pleased with this situation whatsoever. I don't know why the county. And isn't the county supposed to even report all their road waste to the Department of Transportation for the state? Aren't those supposed to be submitted to them? So even if the county doesn't know, the state should know. If you have a road in this county, it should be listed with the Department of Transportation. And yes, if he's clearing public land, we just sat here tonight discussing the garden club and what we're gonna do with the trees on the garden club. And this is leased property, but it's Taylor County property, so they have to go through a process, stop it. What happened here? The process got circumvented, didn't it? It just got removed. Why? Why would you remove such a process as that?
Mr. President, I think.
I think that's a little legitimate statement, statement of removal. We didn't even have any idea that it was even being done. So I don't think it could be anything that the county purposely did, so to speak.
Well, I'm not blaming the county.
I would disagree on you with that statement.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not blaming the county, uh, Mr. Eames. I'm, I'm simply saying that if the county's gonna sit here and, and know that this man has done, gone in there and cleared public land.
Mr. Chairperson, Mr. Messing, that, that portion is not in the deed that we did find. So that portion, that's why we said that portion, there, none of the, what the county maintains is obstructed. So at the time, that would have been prescriptive easement, ownership by the county. So we would not have known that there was any question, but if, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but Conrad, wasn't that twenty foot? That, that, that's not even part of what's deeded in the deed that we did find.
That's correct. That's what we were told today.
Right. So that's not even part of the equation.
With the, the, the piece, the county piece there, so church fence is not even, not even on that piece.
That's my understanding, yes.
Mr. Rau's trying to discuss what Ray is, is talking about.
Correct.
But so there's, you know, so for the county wise, I mean, what is there for the county to do at this point? I mean, is it, is there anything for us to act on as far as? I mean, if the, if the, what I understand and what I heard is this was deeded over to the county by Alex Rau back when?
Sixty years ago.
So this county system, so it went to the county now, right? But how could someone just go file a deed and like just take the, take the property over without the county's consent?
Well, the question came up, uh, was in fact, the deed accepted by the county. Obviously, it was accepted, or at least some portion of it was accepted because of the, um, maintaining, uh, we talked to the, uh, road superintendent, he'd been, said he'd been maintaining it for his fifteen years. Not the, not the whole thing, just the one-third as I talked about before.
But even if, even if the other two pieces of the one-third wasn't maintained, then that don't mean somebody just could take it over.
No. But I thought that the whole problem was that, that there was a, a, uh, complaint about the church blocking a county road. I thought that, I thought that was one of Mr. Rau's complaints.
It was his original complaint.
Yeah.
May I, may I, may I show you a picture?
Okay, I just, and by the way, you don't want to talk to me about Facebook, you sent plenty on there as well.
Oh. Can I show you a picture, Conrad?
Sure. Never talked to you, did he? See what I'm talking about?
See the fence?
Yes. You see it? It's at the end of it. I see the fence, yes, sir.
So at this time, if the county didn't want to do anything with the property, like I said, that's, we don't, we don't intend to do anything, do we? I mean, if Mr. Rau has an issue, then maybe it's more of a civil issue at this point, is that sound right?
That's right.
Right. So there's nothing to go direct staff, for anyone to go chase at this point. Right. So if there's nothing else, then, uh, this item, then we'll move on to county staff items.
Thank you, sir.
Item thirteen, the board to consider request to award the Steam Hatchie Coastal Park planning project and associated contract to Avcon Incorporated, intended by Melody Cox, grant runner.
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Melody.
We received, uh, five proposals and an F of T for the Steam Hatchie Coastal Park. We have some very good proposals from Mr. Millie to us. But the top, um, one grant by the review committee was out of them. And we're respectfully requesting that you, um, vote to allow us to move forward with negotiating a contract with them. And we've moved with this Steam Hatchie Coastal Park project.
Any questions or discussion for the board? Questions, will it take a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Figel, second question, ready, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Uh, moving on to item fourteen, uh, Melody, the order to review and consider approval of the Florida Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Grant Agreement and resolution in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for financial project number four-four-three-five-five-two-nine-four-nine-four-two-five for rehabilitation construction and realignment of taxiway phase one at Perry Foley Airport, intended by Melody Cox, grant runner.
The, the grant's in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It is five percent of the estimated project cost, which is three million five hundred thousand dollars. As we know, we recently submitted a grant to FAA for the third time for funding assistance for this runway, um, realignment. This will be a requirement of FAA that we have to realign this runway. And that's why we keep resubmitting every year. We're told there's not sufficient funding. So hopefully, um, this year will be a better year in obtaining that funding.
Understood, thank you. Do we have a resolution? Do we have a motion to read a resolution without all? A motion, uh, Commissioner Mudi, you have a second. Take it, Mr. Figel, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution, it really doesn't have a title, so I'll just read the first paragraph. It's, it's, whereas the Taylor County Board of County Commissioners and the State of Florida Department of Transportation have determined it to be an investment mutual interest to facilitate the development of herein described project at the Perry Foley Airport, two-way. It's a rehabilitation construction, realignment of taxiways, phase one, Perry Foley Airport, financial project. And I'm not gonna read the number.
Yeah. They have a motion to approve resolution?
Motion.
Question about Commissioner Figel, you have a second. Mr. Mudi, y'all in favor?
Aye. I'd like to approve the agreement also.
A motion back to Mr. Figel to approve the agreement, we have a second. Take it back to Mr. Mudi, y'all in favor?
Aye.
Over that.
Oh, I, I, I just want to ask a question. I know for the past fifteen years, we've done a lot of improvements at the airport. So where does that, where does that leave us, you know? I mean, we've done a lot of, of work out there. Are, are we seeing any difference out there in terms of traffic or potential for something else?
I think, now, Melody, help me if I'm, if I'm saying anything incorrectly, but I think the, the changes that we're making, a lot of them are FAA mandates, right, Melody? And not necessarily meant to, yeah, not necessarily meant to improve traffic at the airport, but to address changing FAA regulations and safety concerns. That's what this realignment is about. So, and, and I'm glad they're funding, you know, their mandated improvements. Now, the addition of the hangars will definitely, the T-hangers, um, will definitely help our airport as far as revenue. Um, and Melody, that's really, I, I mean, we have the highness lighting, uh, but that's really safety related as well, right?
Uh, yes, and the apron improvement that we, um, have just completed, that is safety related too. The majority, that, that majority of the projects have been safety related at the airport. I'm just saying with the, um, hazard mitigation, wildlife mitigation projects that's due to safety issues. But a large, a large portion of what has been completed with grant funds ha- have been safety related. Now, uh, Mrs. Melody is correct, the T-hanger project is, um, to bring in additional revenue to the airport and assist with growth there. The same with, um, the grip and F D O T out gas funding. Hopefully, that will help, um, increase airport growth too.
Are we looking for any more opportunities to add anything else to the airport that would generate revenue? I, I, I think we have a gem out there. And I've said for many years that I would really like to see more, um...
We had, we had something, make a little bit of money out there and that was a hate field.
Well, I'm talking about even, even more than that. I know about some of the smaller airports around this, uh, from what I've been told, have a lot of things going on there that generates a lot of revenue and traffic. So is anybody looking at this?
Yes, ma'am. The T C D A is helping us with that.
Who?
T C D A.
I look, I talk to all kinds of people, I build a solar family, a solar field out there. New Kennedy and all of them told me we didn't quite have enough open ground that would be qualified for solar grounds at the time. They said there's a possibility later on, we could. And that would be a real bump if we could get all that extra ground out there in solar fields because we can't, we can't behave it anymore because FAA said we weren't charging enough.
So we are, um, working with the T C D A to, um, consider the possibility of bringing something aircraft related to, to that property. And also, um, what we would like to do down the road is, when we update our master plan, is to consider pulling some of the property out that belongs to the airport now and possibly purchase it from the airport. So it's in the county's name, so we have more freedom to make decisions about, you know, rentals and something that's income generating.
Is it, uh, right now, for instance, could a, um, um, FedEx airplane or, or one of those come in?
I don't think we have.
I'm asking, wait, I'm, I'm sure they didn't have enough runway.
I, I don't think we have quite enough runway for something like that. And we have looked at the possibility of extending the runway, but that would probably be quite a challenge because of the residential activity in the areas where we would have to go. So, um, we've tried to, you know, just kind of take a step back and consider removing some of the property out of, um, the air, the airport's name, I guess, in lack of a better term, and convert it to county property. So then we can, we don't have to meet all the FAA regulations when we're looking at something revenue generating. Because their requirements are, are pretty stiff.
But, you know, I'm just trying to think of some of the thoughts and, you know, if, but if we could, if we could make it so that we could do something like that and if we could secure some state contracts of some kind that we could really start generating a lot of, of activity and business out there, that could really be, um, revenue, um...
So I think that, and Melody, help me with these dates if I'm wrong. I think the master plan is typically updated every ten years, but I've asked if it's possible to update it maybe sooner, uh, because we're at, what, like year seven, Melody?
Yes, yes.
To see if we've been updated.
We receive F D O T funding for the master plan update because it's, um, quite expensive with the requirements, but FAA have, um, updating the master plan.
So if we are able to receive funding to do that, then we can at least remove all the, you know, like the closed runways, we could remove those, um, from the airport ownership if, if the county could purchase that. Um, and then we can lease it to whomever we want to. Right now, we're, we're kind of constrained to whom we can lease it to. It has to be in the event of a disaster.
Yeah, this is just one of those things that I feel like we should be proactive in is really trying to develop our airport. But like I said, I think there's a gem out there that is underutilized. And I understand why, but if we can, you know, go ahead and update this plan sooner rather than later and, and let's just, you know, take a bullet by the horns and let's get this.
That's something we're working on. Melody, do we have to, um, as far as the funding to update that plan? I know I talked to Avcon about doing that, uh, maybe a month ago. But what is the process for applying for funding to get that done?
It has to be entered into our J S A, J Y plan.
Right.
Which I'm sure that we can do. And I'm not sure if we can move around funding for other projects. These other projects maybe wouldn't be as great of priority. But, um, it would have to first be entered into, um, the, the J S A before be, being considered for funding.
I believe I asked.
I should follow up with, with, um, John on that tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, we, I had mentioned it to him, like I said, maybe a month ago, but I think we got so caught up in some of these other projects that we just haven't gone back to that, to discuss.
Yeah, I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, the board to consider approval of proposal H H R P, Hurricane Idylia recipients and the invitation to bid for one rehabilitation home to demolition and two new construction homes, intended by Melody Cox, grant runner.
Yes, we have three projects that we, um, would like your approval to go out with this time. They are Sabatra Smith, she is a rehab. Michael Barnes, he's a demolition. Michael Barnes, he's a demolition and reconstruction. And Randolph Hoakland, he's a demolition and reconstruction. And I would say after these three, most likely we'll have all of our Idylia funds expended. I don't think that we will be able to do any more projects. We will be moving some of the applicants into ship, but they will have most likely an expensive way with the amount of ship funds we receive at this time. But with your approval, we will move forward with going out for bid on these three.
Good.
Motion to approve.
Motion back, Commissioner Figueroa, to approve, you have a second. Commissioner Melody, all in favor? All right, item 16, the board to consider approval of change order number one in the amount of $115,355 to change the rehabilitation work to demolition and new construction through the CDBG program on the home of Dustin Wimberly and were screwed, screwed, intended by Melody Cox, grant writer.
It will actually cost us more to do a rehab on this time than to do a demolition and reconstruction. The house also had additional damage from the last year of hurricane. So we're requesting approval to move from rehabilitation to demo and reconstruction. In addition, the CDBG program now requires that a home that is constructed along a highway has an 80-foot long, 8-foot high concrete wall, which will cost an additional $19,300, and that's part of the $150,000 change order. We don't have an option on that, that is CDBG requirement. So we are requesting to move the home into a demo, considering rehab, as it's more cost efficient.
This going to cover the $115,355?
It will be covered with ship funds.
Okay.
Have, make sure we have sufficient funding available. We have that CDBG match with ship, but this will be additional funding, and we have confirmed that we do have sufficient ship funding to cover it.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Right. Motion back, Commissioner Figueroa, saying goodbye to Commissioner Melody, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 17, the board to review and consider approval of design bill documents for the construction of the new South Falls dam at the Taylor County Sports Complex as prepared on behalf of the county by Avcon Incorporated, intended by Melody Cox, grant writer.
We are requesting your approval on the design bill documents, and to go out for bid on a firm to do design bills on the construction of the East Falls Dam complex at Taylor County Sports Complex. The entire project has an estimated cost of $483,000. However, runs for the entire project. We are asking the contractor to, or whoever's awarded the bid, to separate out all the cost estimates. So, we know that we have sufficient funding to do all elements. It could be that there are parts of the South Falls field we may not be able to, be able to cover, maybe the shade covering or something along that line. But we are asking your approval to give us that time. The project has to be complete by April 2026, so we've got pretty tight timelines on this.
Right. Any questions or discussion for the board? Question, discussion, we got a motion back, Commissioner Melody. Second, Commissioner Figueroa, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Melody.
Thank you so much.
All right, county administrator, item 18, the board to consider approval of two members in Tuck County Plan Board, intended by one of the former candidates, county administrator. So I know we have four of them.
You do, and there are four applications. Donnie Pickford, Chris Carter are seeking reappointment, and Sarah Vincent and Randy Hathcock are, have submitted applications. These were advertised on the county website and in the newspaper.
Rank it 134. Want to be in the house?
Right. Right, Conrad, 134?
This is one of the always, always given.
Really could be hot, man.
All right, we will, we will go on to, if we're clear, Mr. Bishop, 19, county administrator, discussing a question.
I probably don't have much, we've been pretty busy preparing our budget requests, and getting this finalized and into finance tomorrow, should be just about the gist of them. I will be bringing back a request for proposal documents for the insurance for the property and casualty and workers comp at the next meeting. For advertisement.
All right, we'll get to our next item, comments and concerns from the vote for non-adjourned items, for non-adjourned items. You want to lie? All right, get to item 20, board at 25, Commissioner Figueroa?
Well, Melody, can you tell us again the dates for the budget workshops? I guess we need to make sure I've got them on my calendar.
Okay, so we have Monday, July 14th at 9:00 a.m., Monday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m., Thursday, July 17th at 9:00 a.m., and July 24th at 9:00 a.m. So July 14th, 17th, 21st, and 24th.
Thank you.
And then the budget meeting date, July 29th, to set proposed millage at 5:30. And then we will update with you the public hearing dates in September.
Jan Burden?
We have to let us finish up, don't we? The members on the plan board.
Sarah Vincent and Randy Hathcock.
Here, Mr. Bishop, our big members to the plan board is Sarah Vincent and Randy Hathcock.
Motion to approve this too.
A motion back, Commissioner Figueroa, to approve, you have a second. Second. Say goodbye, Commissioner Melody, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairperson, I'll reach out to both of them tomorrow, we're fixing to have a meeting this week. That would be their first meeting, and make sure they get their package. It's coming up pretty quick.
Everybody wants to look at the ballot in October, it's the entire man, everybody here.
All right, so I believe we've covered all the options, a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
A motion back, Commissioner, all in favor? Thank you all.